Open up the meeting. So, welcome to the April 1st, 2021 West Sacramento Planning Commission Meeting. We continue to meet via live teleconference pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N 2920 to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable on our local channel 20, streaming online through the city's website or through the Zoom platform. Tonight's agenda and all agenda items are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by 5:00 PM via email to the Planning Commission clerk are available for consideration and are posted on the city website, along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting, so that all commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submittal information. Members of the public participating via Zoom may also make oral comments during the meeting. The commission clerk will note the commenters for each item and call you by name when it is your turn to speak. So with that, we'll proceed to tonight's agenda. Andreas, should we approve the agenda at this point and remove that?
There's been a request from staff to remove the general plan information item. So in order to do that, I would recommend that somebody motions to approve the agenda with that change, with that deletion.
I move to approve the agenda with that change.
Second. Anthony, in a second, Ms. Rogers, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Commissioner Hirsch?
Hi.
Commissioner Sablon?
Hi.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Hi.
Commissioner Middleman?
Hi.
Commissioner Deanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Esquivel?
Hi.
Commissioner Berliner?
Hi.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. With that, we have approved the modified agenda to remove item four of the regular agenda. So we'll start with general administration function, Part 1A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda.
Could I just jump in for one quick second? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If anybody from the public is tuned in for that item that was removed, I think we should maybe just more plainly explain it as well, that we're not going to be having the general plan update today, because the staff member who is going to be presenting that item isn't feeling up to providing that for reasons if he's comfortable stating. So in other words, the general plan update item is going to happen at a future meeting.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Ms. Rogers, do you know if we have any commenters on the line for that item?
I don't know if anyone has actually requested to speak on item 1A. We did receive two written public comments related to agenda item number four previous to this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to general mission administration function, Part 1A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on Agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. Do we have any speakers for 1A, Ms. Rogers?
I do not have anyone so far that has requested for that item, no.
So moving to item 1B, Correspondence and Staff Communications from the Planning Commission Secretaries.
Thank you, I'll try to keep this brief. I am the person who is significantly under the weather after receiving a vaccination yesterday, so I appreciate the Planning Commission moving that item back. We want to do it very soon, and I want to be able to, you know, do a thorough presentation, and you know, the whole general plan is not a five-minute item, so I would prefer to do that when I'm a little better and we can have a good discussion on it, but we will be doing that very soon. Otherwise, tonight, I'm going to try to let my staff into the attorney's office, try to respond to as many questions and comments as possible, but I'll still be here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chile. We're happy you're fully vaccinated now, and we'll try not to hammer you with questions today. Okay, so moving to Part 1C, Disclosure of Ex parte Communications. Do any commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? I'm not seeing any hands. Consent agenda? We have a motion, or does anyone want to pull the minutes from the?
Chair Sablon, if I could, just one correction in the minutes, and then I'd be happy to move to approve them, but I noticed the typo read my name. If staff could correct entry number three on the minutes under the roll call vote, there's just no I or anything next to my name for that one, so if staff could include an I, that would be my one request for a correction. And that's under entry number three, the roll call vote.
On my version, I see the I on mine.
Maybe it's just mine, then. My version, it has Lockhart I, Middleman I, Esquivel I, Hirsch, blank, Skiger I, Berliner I, Sablon I.
Mine has it as well. I mean, it has it corrected.
Oh, I might be looking off of an older version, then, in which case I apologize.
So. The correction needs to be made, we will absolutely do that.
In that case, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a second. Ms. Rogers, can you do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Middleman?
Hi.
Commissioner Esquivel?
Hi.
Commissioner Deanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Berliner?
Hi.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Hi.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Hi.
And Commissioner Sablon?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the regular agenda. We have item three, the Continued Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Zone Text Amendment for Fueling Stations in the Limited Industrial Zone and a Conditional Use Permit for Fueling Station Expansion at 4305 West Capitol Avenue. Mr. Laffey is handling this item?
Yes, good evening, Chair Sablon and members of the commission. The item before you tonight was continued from the last Planning Commission meeting on March 18th, due to modifications to the project shortly before the last meeting. The item before you tonight includes those updates, and is essentially two separate requests. One is a zone text amendment, and the other is a conditional use permit. So the request has been made for these two actions to facilitate the expansion of the Clean Energy Natural Gas Fueling Station at 4305 West Capitol Avenue. That property is zoned limited industrial, and Clean Energy operates an existing compressed natural gas fueling station at this location. This request before you tonight is for that facility to expand the number of fast fill fueling stations, and to add a slower time fill component in the rear of the property. So currently, fueling stations are not a permitted use in the limited industrial zone, so part of the recommended action before you tonight is to approve Resolution 21-2 PC, which recommends the City Council adopt Ordinance 21-4 to conditionally permit fueling stations in the limited industrial zone. Prior to the most recent zoning code update a few years ago, fueling stations were permitted by right in the limited industrial zone. And the second request before you tonight is a conditional use permit, which is predicated on City Council adopting Ordinance 21-4, and the use permit is to permit the fueling station in the limited industrial zone. So that was a lot to take in there. The reason staff is supportive of this expansion is because it would help to implement the city's clean air and climate goals. Per the applicant's justification statement, the compressed natural gas would be from renewable sources like food waste, landfills, wastewater. The city has many businesses with commercial fleet vehicles that use diesel engines, and the applicant has indicated many of these businesses have begun transitioning to natural gas vehicles when that fueling option is located in near proximity. So this would help, we have a lot of diesel fleet vehicles in the city, and this would help those to transition over to renewable compressed natural gas. So city staff received a comment letter in support of the project from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, and per the air district's letter, renewable CNG vehicles are 90% cleaner than a new diesel vehicle. In addition, the city has begun work on the Climate Action Plan, which will be coming before the Planning Commission later this year, and one of the major findings so far, which is not really surprising, is that on-road vehicles account for a large portion of the city's greenhouse gas emissions, and a dramatic reduction in transportation GHG emissions is needed in the coming years for the city to reach emission reduction targets. And staff is supportive of this request, because we see this helping to achieve that. Having more commercial fleet vehicles transition away from diesel to CNG can help us get there. So lastly, staff is recommending the commission find that both the zone text amendment and the conditional use permit are categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to the exemptions listed in the staff report. This concludes my report, and the applicant is on the call. Looks like there are a few different representatives from Clean Energy on the call. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Middleman?
Yes, I just had one question, and I think I got some clarification on it by looking through the documents, but there was a map included that identified all the other ML zones in the area, and I wanted some clarification on if there are other existing fueling stations that are currently in those ML zones, or if there was a requirement or a request for any other types of fueling stations, whether they be CNG, RCNG, or typical diesel gas for those zones.
The staff is not aware of any other fueling stations in limited industrial zone. Looking through those properties, there aren't too many limited industrial zones, but if there were any existing, this request would only help them, because right now, fueling stations are not permitted at all. So any existing fueling station is what we call legal non-conforming, so this request would help them to be, would help them to make modifications like Clean Energy is requesting tonight. So that's for if a fueling station was a primary use, if a fueling station was an ancillary, say, a commercial, you know, business had a small fueling for just their own fleet, we look at that as being accessory use, and there's most likely accessory fueling in the limited industrial zones and other businesses.
And just real quick on top of that, Commissioner Middleman, if this change were ultimately approved by the council, it also gives the planning commission maximum discretion over any future fueling stations that may be proposed in that zoning district, be they CNG, regular gas, et cetera.
Excellent, that was my follow-on, just to confirm that it was a conditional approval, and if there was a need in one of these zones at a future time, then it would also come to the commission. So thank you for that clarification. I had no other questions from my side for staff.
Vice Chair Berliner?
Hi, thanks, staff. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
I'm prepared to say a few short words if that would be your pleasure of the planning commission.
And then, hold on one second. Do we need to open this up for public comment?
Yeah.
Do we need to open this for a public hearing?
Yes, so we'll do that once the commissioners are done with questions for staff. So I'm not seeing any other hands. So we will open the public hearing, and if the applicant has a presentation or wants to say a few words, you can start with that.
Good evening, Chair Sablon and commissioners. My name is Todd Campbell, and I represent Clean Energy as their Vice President of Public Policy and Regulatory Affairs. I've been with the company for 15 years, and we're really excited to bring this project to the city of West Sacramento, as it will allow us to replace fossil natural gas with renewable compressed and liquefied natural gas options. Renewable natural gas is generated from food waste, landfills, wastewater treatment facilities, dairy farm waste, and through Sacramento's leadership, we're starting to look at other sources like forest waste to deliver this extremely low carbon fuel to regional trucking and other heavy-duty vehicle uses, not only in the region but throughout the state. Clean Energy has the history with the city of West Sacramento in delivering clean fuels to medium and heavy-duty regional trucks, and we are now looking to improve our ability to provide even cleaner fuels, such as renewable CNG and LNG. And what do I mean by that? Currently, diesel today is roughly about 100 units of carbon intensity under the state's low-carbon fuel standard. The fuels that we're actually proposing to deliver to you could give up to a negative 500 units of carbon intensity, and it's a real mind-bender, because I'm not a scientist by training, but working with the California Resources Board, the emissions that we're able to stop going directly into the atmosphere through these various facilities that otherwise would have raw methane go into the air is why we have such an amazing score, and why renewable natural gas is the lowest carbon fuel under the state's low-carbon fuel standard. Pairing this fuel with natural gas truck engines that are now 90% cleaner, that means that they're certified with the Air Resources Board to reduce nitric oxide emissions more than 90% than the cleanest diesel on the market today. This is a combination that clearly will support the city's climate action plan by providing another strategy to reach emissions reductions required by SB 32 and the executive order B 30-15, which establishes a statewide carbon neutrality target by 2045. Also would say that current fleets that would access our stations include Bathison, Chavez Trucking, Norcal Beverage, and Mountain Valley Express. This, the ability for us to provide CNG or compressed natural gas in renewable form at this particular site would also bring on additional fleets that include SCs Express, Blue Eagle, AJR, and many others. So we are also very humbled by the support of the local air districts, which include both the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District and the Yolo Solano AQMD. Renewable CNG provides great solution for truck fleets today. In fact, it could deliver carbon neutrality results today, which is very exciting, given that, you know, 2045 is a long way out, and so we're able to bring the region and the city of West Sacramento real results right now. So we obviously support staff's recommendation of option one, and I have my technical staff with me to answer any additional questions that you might have with regards to our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hirsch?
Thanks, Chair Sablon, and thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your presentation just now. I'm not too familiar with this use of property, so I was hoping you could go into a little more detail about the proposal, in particular, the time fill fueling component of the proposal.
Commissioner Hirsch, my name is Sylvia Hindren, I'm the Vice President of Engineering and Construction for Clean Energy, so I'll answer that one. Time fill is, because of the variety of customers that we have, some customers do to their operations fuel by pulling up to a dispenser, much like you do with traditional gas, where you pull up, you pump in, and you drive off. It takes about 15 to 20 minutes. Some customers prefer to stay on the road all day and don't want to stop to fuel, and they would, they typically return to base and then park overnight, and then plug in and slowly fill their vehicles overnight. So the time fill is more similar in experience to like recharging an electric vehicle, which takes slower and longer versus kind of on-the-road fast fueling. So we want to give our customers an option to fast fill if they're using the trucks during the day and then park them overnight versus running them all day, leaving them overnight, and then picking them up in the morning and driving off. So this is just those components.
I see. And so then, since I'm, I drive a regular gas vehicle, so time fills new to me, but just from my knowledge and confirmation, then, when something is being refueled using the time fill method, it's not like there are engines running and emissions in the air happening for six, seven, eight hours at a time, correct?
They really turn it off, park it, and then they come back and pick it up the next day. No, that's what they're trying to do also. They don't want their staff to sit there and have to fill it. They basically park the vehicle, plug it in like any other vehicle, and slowly fill overnight, and then eight hours later, they typically pick it up and drive off with it.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hindren, and I'll tell my questions right now, Chair Sablon.
Vice Chair Berliner?
Hi, oh, let me just put my hand down. Hi, guys, thank you so much for coming and giving this presentation. So full disclosure, I work at the Air Resources Board on incentive programs, so I'm a little bit familiar with the infrastructure side, but one of the things when I was reading this that concerned me was that because this is natural gas, even though it's renewable natural gas, it's not necessarily within our state goals of meeting zero emission by 2045, I think it is, for trucks, at least for new trucks on the road. So why, like, I know that Clean Energy's business model is CNG and LNG, but why not try to maybe outfit this for hydrogen possibly, or even charging?
Permission to answer?
Yeah, go ahead. This is a public hearing, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Berliner, that is an excellent question, and as you know, the state of California is struggling to reduce emissions from heavy-duty trucks. Heavy-duty trucks is often the number-one source of emissions, definitely when you look at the San Joaquin Valley as well as the South Coast, and we are losing that battle. The state's goal to go 100% zero are excellent goals, and Clean Energy actually is, you know, we consider ourselves a partner, especially through renewable natural gas, because renewable natural gas doesn't have to just go into a heavy-duty truck combustion engine, it could also be reformulated and fuel hydrogen, as well as create electricity. So you're ahead of us in the sense that that's exactly where we want to go one day. As you know, there's a lot of trucks out there, and we are still waiting to get commercialized zero-emission trucks in this state that can meet all the demand and needs of the trucking industry. In the meantime, the default is diesel, and which is a far more polluting fuel. As you know, some of the in-use emissions tests that the California Resources Board did, maybe a couple of years ago, showed that diesel was actually up to nine times higher in in-use emissions, especially at low speeds, speeds below 35 miles per hour, because the pre- and after-treatment wasn't functioning properly. That's a big problem, and, you know, our business model is, we want to help those drivers who are not yet ready to move to a zero-emission strategy to be able to have another opportunity to reduce emissions and participate in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And so that was a long response, but I would say, don't count us out in not supporting zero-emission technology, but we also have, you know, a business model to support us on the way to get to a zero-emission future.
Thank you, and then I have one slash two more questions. This will be a, I just want to double-check that this will be a public access station, and for the slow fills, how would you prioritize slow fills? So say, small fleets or owner-operators need somewhere to refuel overnight, because they're making that transition from diesel to CNG, and they decide to go with something like your leasing model, how would they, would they be able to refuel overnight, or would priority be given to the larger Amazons, FedExs, UPSs? How would you deal with something like that?
So to question one, absolutely has to be a public access station, because we're receiving regional dollars, partially through a grant, so that should assure you that this is absolutely a publication, and it has been. With regards to the time fill, Sylvia, would you like to handle that one, since you're more technical than I am?
Sure, so the reason, what public access allows most people to do is to fuel quickly and move on. When it comes to time fill, we are proposing, I think, you know, a certain amount of spaces, and then any available space beyond that is open to whoever may want to use it, but we do have customers who are already discussing potentially, hey, we would like to fill X number of vehicles, but we want that specifically to be time fill. We would have to dedicate and secure those spots for them, because that's what they want, but anything available, any space beyond that is basically open to anyone who wants to do the time fill and wants to make the commitment to do that.
So what, okay, sorry, I have another follow-up. What companies or what fleets would be interested in the slow, in the time fill?
So Todd mentioned the existing customers in the area already that are replacing their diesel fleets, and it's them and a couple of others, so they've already reached out to us and saying, hey, we have, you know, basically distribution yards in West Sacramento, we are replacing our diesel fleets with CNG, and we need to have an available fuel source, and we're trying to meet them with that particular station, because obviously, what you don't want in West Sacramento or anybody, when a multi-state operator has multiple yards and they're replacing their fleet, if they don't have a fueling station, they're going to leave diesel behind in West Sacramento, and they're going to move their new vehicles someplace else where they can fuel. And without that place, you know, you're not giving them any options, so we would like them to obviously deploy those vehicles out of West Sacramento and then pull their diesel fleet out and either retire them or move them somewhere else.
Okay, all right, thank you, those are all my questions.
Commissioner Middleman?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, and the proposal was very detailed, and so I just had a couple of clarification questions. Within that, you include a couple of tables associated with the businesses that are looking for the demand, and later on in the document, you include, you know, that there's agreements in place, and one of them includes UPS, which isn't shown on the local, on the West Sacramento business demand, and anyone in West Sacramento knows UPS is massive in the West Sacramento area, and that, along with the other companies that you have listed here that have already either have vehicles or have shown interest, is essentially these 50 time fill or time fill spots already accounted for, or it doesn't even seem like that may be enough, or are they already all accounted for via these companies?
I don't know specifically, because, you know, obviously, when you're meeting with UPS and, you know, an Amazon or whoever, we leave it open to them on what they want to do, so we have, we're trying to maximize the space, so we've got 50 spots. I don't know what the commitment into it is just yet, because if we allow 10 spots to UPS, 10 spots to Amazon, and someone else, the rest of the fleet would have to fast fill, so we don't, I don't know what the commitment is between the various people among those spots, but we imagine that they will be used up fairly quickly, because the demand for all fueling, whether it's time fill or fast fill, is pretty high, from the people that we are currently working with. Their question more is, how quickly can you get this done? And we're like, well, let's see what we can do here.
Okay, and then the one follow-on question to that was, you also include a table in there that shows the data for 2018 and 2019, which shows the actual use of the facility, and they seem pretty consistent, and then the data switches to 2021 as a projection. Has the 2020 data available showing that there's been an increase in the use, which is necessitating this, or how is that, do we jump a year to 2021 projections?
Because we're, right now, we're, the demand up to this point has been, you know, both CNG and LNG, where now we're seeing a huge spike in demand for future because of the fleets that are being replaced, so we don't have really good data right now, since we're 2020, we're just seeing the demand right now in 2021, based on the recent acquisitions of vehicles by our, you know, major truck haulers.
That was all the questions I had, I think. That was all the questions I had. I think you answered my previous questions that I jotted down already. Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands up? I just had a quick question. It might be for one of your more technical folks, Mr. Campbell. So you mentioned negative 500 units of carbon intensity. How do you get a negative intensity for that?
So the low-carbon fuel standard is, I think, the premier standard to try to take the carbon out of vehicle fuel statewide. And as you know, carbon intensity can vary greatly based on how you produce it. Efficiency is a huge factor. It also takes into account, once you produce it, how do you get it to market? And so when I say up to 500, that doesn't mean every gallon is going to be up to negative 500. Some could be negative 150, for example. The current average of renewable CNG as of last quarter was a negative 1%, which shows that we're going in the right direction. It used to be plus. And that was when we were really looking at, you know, just landfill gas sites and not really getting too far into the dairy farms or other sanitation facilities throughout the state of California. Now we are, thanks to the good leadership of the state, some various incentives that are offered through the state to be able to produce renewable natural gas. And as you know, these things take time. So we're looking at a big uptick in these new sources that are carbon-negative that are entering into the space, which is actually already getting us to a carbon-neutral, if not negative, outcome. So I hope that explains it a little bit. And also, it's because, you know, when you have a cow and, you know, they have waste, if we're able to take that waste and, you know, basically bake down the organic and turn it into a renewable natural gas, we're presenting that methane, that raw methane coming from the cow's system from going directly into the atmosphere. And that, the potential emissions of that is so great that you get to a negative level because you're not only removing a potential emission, but then you're putting into productive use where natural gas is already a lower carbon fuel compared to diesel. Very complex, but the California Resources Board has gone through great painstaking efforts to calculate and account for these emissions reductions using lifecycle analysis. You know, basically making sure that the integrity of the fuel is 100% certain. So we don't make the numbers. The Air Board does, and that's the way it should be. And I'm very pleased at what we're able to do in this industry to reduce the emissions.
Yeah, thank you. That is helpful because the explanation about the cow's example, that's helpful to how you get a negative. Thank you. Commissioner Middleman, was that from before?
I realized I had one follow-up. Apologize. And it's just more about the safety aspect of it, the time-fill. Is this site actually monitored or what safety checks are in place? Especially if you're hooking up a vehicle and leaving it overnight, and if there's anything that happens. Just for, you know, peace of mind, what is, what kind of safety checks are in place on the system?
So and typically in time-fill, those are secured access sites. So that would be behind the gate, would only authorize users can go and park their vehicles. And all of our camera systems or all of our stations are monitored 24/7 from our corporate maintenance office. So we have video live feed and access 24 hours, 365 days a year. And we have live staff on a 24-hour basis that monitors all of our sites.
And then any safeties on, like, overfill itself once it's connected or that?
Automatic pressure transducers that balance or reach, once a certain pressure, it automatically cuts off. And the safety switches are on every time-fill post and on the equipment themselves. So there's really no ability to overfill.
And I'm assuming there's also leak detection and everything else in the piping systems itself?
Absolutely, along with automatic shut-off valves and other pressured inducers that will basically double up the safety on anything being overfilled.
Excellent. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Can I just add one real quick thing? The other wonderful thing about the low-carbon fuel standard, it incentivizes us not to lose product. If you lose product, you start losing your carbon benefits, and you could lose them quickly. So we are, you know, there's a strong incentive to make sure that our systems are still tight and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell and your team for answering all the questions. Ms. Rogers, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and take it back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Hirsch.
Thanks, Chair Sablon. I'll kick us off. I, you know, really appreciate all the information that I just heard. Again, I'm not really a subject matter expert in this area, but, you know, I respect Vice Chair Berliner's expertise, certainly. And hearing the information from the applicant was also very helpful. And I think this project is a good one for the residents of the city. You know, what struck me when I read the staff report, and what Mr. Laffey mentioned just now as well, his staff report, is that the, and I'm reading page eight of the agenda packet, where it says, "The city's climate action plan identifies on-road vehicles accounting for 58% of all greenhouse gas emissions in the city," which, to my knowledge, is pretty astounding. From my work in the state senate, I know that the state's overall balance of greenhouse gas emissions from transportation is around 40%. So the fact that the city of West Sacramento is up at almost 60% really goes to show the impact that trucking and transportation in general has in the city. So, you know, hearing about this project, hearing that there's enough demand among community businesses to support a transition away from diesel fuel to CNG fuel, I think is pretty spectacular. It goes to show there's a lot of businesses that get it, you know, that there's a demand for it. And I think it's going to have a really positive impact for the residents of West Sacramento. So I feel pretty comfortable supporting the staff-recommended action for this item. And just want to, you know, applaud the applicant for doing this. I also read in the staff report how they applied for almost $2 million and received $2 million, almost $2 million in car moyer grant funds. So I think it's great that they're using all the resources possible to help make this a success.
Vice Chair Berliner.
I would like to echo Commissioner Hirsch's statements. But most importantly, so it, as someone who works on zero-emissions incentives, it actually pains me to, like, hear about a CNG station just because my daily work is all about getting people into zero-emission vehicles. However, I recognize that that is difficult. I recognize that the technology may not necessarily be there or be ready for mass-production-ish, although there are others that would probably disagree with me. And I know that when the trucks are there, at least for right now, there's a huge amount of delay in getting the orders out, getting the trucks built so that they can be on the road reducing emissions. And Clean Energy, I know, does a really great job with natural gas. Like, that's their jam, and I get that. So I just want to say thank you because we need more, we need cleaner trucks. And yes, I know renewable CNG is not, is not battery or hydrogen, but it is way better than diesel. So Commissioner Lockhart's going to make a statement after me, but I would like to move this motion and move to approve staff recommendation when everyone is done with comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Yeah, I just want to thank the applicants for bringing this project forward to the city. I think it recognizes that, you know, ag waste and animal waste and landfills are the biggest methane sources in California. And taking that methane into something that's usable and that will also attract business to our community, I think, should be applauded. So I appreciate this, and I agree. I'll echo the comments from my fellow commissioners that I agree that this is a tremendous asset for our community.
So I'm not seeing any hands up, and I think we have a motion on the table from Vice Chair Berliner.
Sorry, I haven't updated my Zoom account on this device yet, so I wasn't able to raise my hand. I just want to also comment and appreciate all of the support from the commissioners on this project. I think the presenter did a really good job laying this out, and I want to appreciate Commissioner Middleman's question on safety. That was something that was definitely on my mind. I'm really grateful that this city and in partnership with Clean Energy is helping lead the way for this innovation. So thank you for partnering up with us on this.
Sorry about that, Commissioner Escobar. I saw your thumbs up. Just, you know, echoing Commissioner Lockhart there. So do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. And so Ms. Rogers, can you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Escobar?
Aye.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Middleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Deanda?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sablon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, staff recommendations approved. And good luck to you, Mr. Campbell, and the rest of your team in helping further our climate action goals.
Thank you. We look forward to cleaning up the surrounding regions, guys.
Mr. Laffey, do we have a city council date for this matter at this time?
We do not yet, but it will be in one of the upcoming city council meetings, probably in the next month.
I think, so we're moving item four to next meeting. So moving to administration function, part two. Any informal discussion from the commissioners? So I did take a look at the comments for item four. Can I just mention something about that this time, or do I have to wait on that? I think that might go to our city attorney.
I think we should save that for next time.
Okay. Okay. So I think if there's nothing else, oh, Commissioner Berliner.
So I just had a quick question. Will those comments from this, from that, from item four that we've moved to next meeting, will those be reposted with everything? Okay, cool. Just checking. Thanks.
Okay, looks like nothing further. Mr. Tilly, get some rest.
Thank you. I'm ready.
Meetings adjourned. We'll see everyone in two weeks. Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Bye.